Get it going. All right, you hit that, perfect. All right. So, 7 o'clock, we will open up the Town of Southlake Planning Board meeting for September 22, 2020. This is being recorded via Zoom. However, if anybody else on it wishes to record it, they can. They just need to let us know. Is there anybody who is recording this evening? Okay. Just so that the record is clear, this is being held via Zoom. It is being done pursuant to the Governor's Order of, I believe it was March 12 and March 15, that allowed for the holding of these types of meetings via Zoom. 7 o'clock, Town Planner's Report. Alan.
Good evening. The first thing that we have, we've received an inquiry into 275 Granville Road. It's owned, its land is owned by the Pfrifty family. And back in November of 2018, they had come in for two A and R lots. And this is on Granville Road, just going west. And what they have to do now is they have to inquire, because it is in Chapter 61, which is agricultural preservation. And what's been sent around to the different departments is the town's right of first refusal. Talking to the other departments and looking where the parcel is, there was no interest in the other, there's no interest by any other departments. But as a courtesy, I'm bringing it to the attention of the Planning Board. Right now, it's, there are two, just shy of three acre lots on the, going up Granville Road, on your left-hand side, overlooking Sodom.
[inaudible] roadway, middle of the hill, all the other classes are unknown even around the vehicle that they had.
Hello? Is everyone here listening to me?
Yeah, hold on one second. I will, hold on.
There's probably a police call.
Yep. Alan, is yours unmuted? Alan, can you unmute yours?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now, Michael?
You're unmuted, Alan. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, sorry. So I was saying that 275 Granville Road are two A and R lots that were approved back in November 2018. And it's owned by the Pfrifty family. And what they have to do, they're going to be selling it. And they, as a courtesy, it goes to the different departments for Chapter 61. And all the other departments in town have, didn't have any interest in it. But as a, I'm like, I'm just bringing it before the board. And, you know, Carl would like to know by tomorrow morning if we have any interest in the parcel.
Carl, you'd like to know by tomorrow morning?
Yes, because I guess what they want to do is they want to schedule it for their next select boards making. It's, there are two, there are two, it just, like I said, it just came in yesterday. There are two parcels. If you're on Granville Road going west, they're on the left-hand side. If you go past Klein Road. And we did receive A and R, we gave them A and Rs for two lots. And they have a buyer. But they have to release it from the Chapter 61 if the town's interested. I don't, I don't know if you know where the gas line crosses Granville Road? From the south to the north?
I don't.
It's, if you're going, you're passing, if you're on Granville Road going towards Granville on your left-hand side, before you start going down the dip in the road, there's a large track of line. They actually have signs up for sale. And they do have somebody who's interested in buying. And the town would like to send a letter and have it on the agenda. Conservation and everybody else has no interest in it. So I'm just bringing it to the attention of the town, of the Town Planning Board.
About a thousand feet past Klein Road on the left-hand side.
Yes. It's well before you get to Salva Loomis. It's on the high, on the high hill. Just, just right opposite the large farm, the Stolik Farm, but it's on the opposite side of the road.
There's the original Nucci-Pfrifty house and property after, after the pipeline.
Yeah, this, this pipeline actually runs through the Pfrifty property, which crosses, which crosses Granville Road going north.
All right, well, why don't we, why don't we just put that aside and deal with it at the end? Just remind us, you know, if anybody wants to look at it, Google it or whatever, while the meeting's going on, they can. And we can just circle back to it at the end of the meeting so that we're not holding up, you know, everybody else who's here while we talk about it.
Right. Also, we've had continued interest in number 302 Granville Road, which is on the north side of Granville Road going, going towards Granville. And this is the property that was, has, the properties have no frontage on a town road. And this is at the last minute. We talked about this. And what they'd have to do is they would have to put a town road in and have 200-foot frontage in the R40 zone. So there's, there's been a lot of interest in it because it's 23 acres. And, but it doesn't, it can't be built on because of lack of being on a town road and have frontage. Another question that came up on the Greens East, I think this was talked about when we were reviewing the Greens East regarding the open space. Our attorney would like to know, it's written that the open space is just for the owners of the subdivision, that people will be moving in. And he's questioning, should that be open to all public? And I know Mr. David Sutton, you know, had some concern, you know, he had, he had mentioned, you know, it's awful. People are going to be coming down these small roads, parking their cars and going onto the open space. And whether that should be open to the public or just the residents of the Greens East. Again, this is something that came up just recently.
All right, well, let's, with everything going with what's going on tonight, let's, let's just circle back with the stuff that the board needs to discuss.
Okay.
At the end of this.
Okay, just to give a heads up, the American Inn has filed bankruptcy. And there, it's now in auction. So I've been receiving quite a few calls from individuals interested in purchasing it. And they want to do some revision, they want to do some site plan revisions. And so I told them that they have to submit the plans to the board. There's not a change of use or a special permit. What they're doing is they're getting, they're limiting the assisted living. And everything is going to be over 55. And so there's a problem with the parking that they're going to try to resolve. And they just wanted me to let you know that, you know, they're working on that problem.
Okay.
We did advertise for the Subcommittee for the Short Term Rental on Channel 15, the Westfield News. And we have received four town staff members, one Select Board member, and two residents who are interested in being on the board.
Okay.
Mr. Moglen, who I understand is going to be the representative for the Select Board. The Fire Department has a representative, the police does, the Building Department has, and Randy has also volunteered. So, you know, with the, with the five that we have, and I missed Mr. Moglen had mentioned, he knew somebody who might be interested in it also. So people are made aware of it. And somebody from the Planning Board would have to be selected to be the Chair of that. And Megan and I would be there for support. But again, that's something to be talked about later because I know we're going to have more, more to do later on. Again, 32 More Finding Hill Road, that's a large parcel of land going, when you're going south towards Connecticut, it's on the left-hand side. We had granted one A and R parcel for the existing house. The two sisters are now starting to pursue the A and Rs along More Finding Road, as well as a possible subdivision in the back. And again, they have to work out, because all that is put in, again, to Chapter 61. So they have to resolve that. But they started, they started work on that. And the last thing is, I responded to quite a few of Butters that concerns with the proposed Verizon cell tower. And then I had a lengthy conversation with Representative Baldigo, who is receiving, receiving calls. So everyone who was asked, I have sent them the 13, 12 or 13 sheets showing them where it is and where the location is. And that will be a prototype.
Perfect.
That's a lead-in to your next thing.
Yeah. 710 is public comments. Is there anyone who has something to bring to the attention of the Planning Board that is, that is not on the agenda tonight? And actually, hold on. What I'm going to do, because I'm having some difficulty, I think, technically with the audio here. So let me, I'm gonna, I'm going to ask everybody to make sure that, you know, they don't have TVs on or cell phones ringing or whatever else, if they can. Obviously, there are certain folks who can't change that. But if you can, please do. And I'm just going to try to unmute everybody here. Okay, so if everybody, actually, it's not working. So if everybody can unmute, if you're able to, please do. All right. We're going to try that again. Here's my suggestion, only because it's come up in meetings that we've had, which is that if you are two people in the same house, you really have to be in on separate calls. You have to be in different rooms. You have to be significantly away from each other or else there's going to be feedback loop. And it's going to be quite evident. So, let's try it again. If people want to try to unmute themselves, we'll see if we can hear this.
Okay, I'm off.
Okay, that sounds better. And I'll go, if I see people unmuted or muted, I will ask them to unmute themselves and we'll, we'll see how the. Okay, so with people unmuted, I will ask again, if there's anybody who has something to bring to the attention of the Planning Board, which is not on the agenda this evening, they wish to bring it separately from what's on the agenda, please let us know now. Nothing, okay. So we will go ahead to the 715 Public Hearing, which I assume is what. Let me, you know, this, give me one minute.
Randy.
Okay. 715 Public Hearing. Let me read the notice. And then we will go to sort of a run-through of who's here so that we have a, basically a sign-in sheet of who's here for the meeting. Notice of Public Hearing, Tuesday, September 22, 2020, 7:15 PM, 13 Liberty Lane. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, that the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 22, 2020, at 7:15 PM via Zoom, on an application by Verizon Wireless for a special permit, site plan approval, and another communication permit for a property located at 13 Liberty Lane, Zoned as R20. The property is shown on current assessor's map, 92 parcel 3132. Zoom meeting identification and telephone access is provided. The applicant proposes to build a Verizon cell tower on the property in accordance with the Code of Southlake zoning bylaws, Chapter 185, Sections 9, 10, 13, and 23.1. Copy of the application and the plans may be inspected by contacting Town Planner at his email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and manner designated. Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southlake Planning Board. Okay. Let us do this hopefully once, because we have 74 people on the Zoom right now. So I am going to just run through what I see on my screen in the order that I see it on my screen. And what I will do, if you could, is just identify if, if I say it correctly, if it's, if it's on the screen correctly, and I say it, just say, you know, here or correct or whatever you want. If I can't read it, if it's just a phone number, if I say it incorrectly, if it's a different name, please just speak up and let me know who you are, what your, and where you reside. That would be great. All right, so Alan Slusser, who's the Town Planner, is here. Michael Doherty himself, the Chair of the Planning Board is here. I see Chief Bishop is here. John Griffin here.
Correct.
I see Tony Vetavelli. And again, I'll apologize now for some names.
Here.
I see Dick Gutsinger, member of the Planning Board. I see Randy Rindell. I see Doug Moglen. Dave Scotland. I see E. Griffiths.
Yes.
Thank you. Jessica Thornton, who's a member of the Planning Board. I see an individual who I assume is not Jenna, but I'm, there you go.
Yeah, Dan Searls.
All right, Dan, thank you very much. I see a Phil Lozito.
Yes, here.
See Kat Armstrong. I see one that says Brian's iPad 2.
Yep, that's Marissa and Brian Hughes. We're 33 Lauren Lane.
Thank you. I see Michael McMahon. I see a phone number ending in 0792.
Did you say 0792?
Yes.
Oh yeah, Jim Betrayed at 5 Mockingbird.
Thank you. I see Craig Harrow.
Here.
Hold on. I'm just getting some feedback. Do you have Cynthia? Maybe Art, is that how you say it?
Yes, 24 Patriots Way.
Thank you. I see one that says E.L.A. B.O.D.Y.C.Z.
Correct.
How do you pronounce that? I apologize.
It's Lebotus at 21 Pine Knoll.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Let's see, Christine Vetavelli Peterson.
Correct, 13 Patriots Way.
I see a Vinnie Abandonza.
Yes, Susan Abandonza, 6 Macinburg Lane.
Thank you. I see someone who says, it doesn't matter.
Yes. Patrick and Mary Martin, 7 Patriots Way.
Thank you. I see a phone ending in 3440.
Peter Flynn, 43 Lexington Circle.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Your phone ending in 8124. All right, we can come back. Let me go to page two. My, flipping around. I see. There's someone, Mark, no?
Yep.
Okay, what's your, what's your phone name, sir?
Mark Keether, 19 Patriots Way.
Thank you. I see one that says Brett's iPhone. Come back to that.
That's Sergeant Banish.
Is it, is it, that's, okay, perfect. Thank you. William.
Taysh, Taysh, 22 Patriots Way.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
If I repeat myself, I apologize because it's kind of moving around here. Stacy Malkey.
Yes, Dan Coyote Glen.
Corey Woburn.
Yes, 7 Liberty Lane.
All right. Okay. I can't remember if I mentioned you before. She's for the Planning Board. Joe Deedy. Dick Gutsinger, Dusina, and from the Planning Board, and Marcus Phelps. Christian Bach.
Christian and Amber Bach, we are at 10 Pine Knoll.
Celeste.
20, Slusser, you got 20 here, right?
Celeste, Yambay, is that how you say that?
Yes, that's correct. Celeste Bamba.
Yeros. Say your.
Yes, 29 Lauren Lane.
Thank you. Karen, can you hear me? I know it's you, so that's fine. We'll keep going. Ellen Freeman, who I believe is the attorney for Verizon, as well as Michael Fenton, who's an attorney for Verizon, who's down there as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jay Littori for Verizon, 122 Forest Hills Road in Springfield.
Thank you. Let's see, Stacy Rooney.
9 Coyote Glen.
Thank you. Ryan Hedges.
27 Lauren Lane.
Yep, Matt Bulmer, 24 Lauren Lane.
Okay. Christine, I mean, I forget if I already got you, but I apologize if I did. You just have to unmute yourself if you could, please. There you go.
10 Patriots Way.
Okay, thank you very much. Danielle Dixtein.
Dixtein, 7 Mockingbird Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Dean Gutsin, consultant with Verizon Wireless.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, 28 Dear Run.
Thank you. Dennis Hackett. Dennis Hackett. Kelly Robb.
Yep, here, 14 Dear Run.
Thank you. All right, let me just. Philip Lemire, Lemire.
Lemire, Lori and Philip Lemire, 12 Lauren Lane.
Again, I will apologize if I catch you twice. I'm just, it's switching all over a little bit. So Jeremy Fiorentino.
Yep, correct, I'm at 40 Dear Run.
Thank you. David Vivian.
Yes, David Vivian, consultant with Verizon Wireless.
Thank you. Stephen Sobey.
Here, Stephen Sobey, attorney with Verizon Wireless.
Okay, thank you. I assume that's Hope Tremblay. Is that correct?
Yes, that's me, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Williams.
Yeah, 4 Pinnacle Drive.
Thank you. I see something that says Joseph's iPad.
Joe and Ann Eltulagana, 21 Patriots Way.
Thank you. Hannah. I'm gonna get that one wrong.
Yeah, Hannah Jajo, 12 Patriots Way.
Thank you very much. I see one that just says iPhone. Anybody have, there's just a iPhone, there you go.
Hey, it's Sarah Hedges, 27 Lauren Lane.
Hey, Sarah, how are you? Thank you. I have one that says Alina K. Alina K. Can you just tell us your full name, and I didn't hear it, so I apologize if you could do that again. Not hearing anything yet, so we can come back. I see Jason St. Jacques.
Yes, I'm here, 22, dear Run.
Thank you. I see one that says Jay Spagnu.
Hi, yes, Jim Spagnolo, 20, dear Run.
Thank you. See one, I believe it says Sheila, does it say Chamberlain?
Yes, Sheila Chamberlain, Brian Chamberlain, 17 Foster Road.
Thank you. See one that says Peter.
Peter Flynn, 43 Lexington Circle.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, that was still you, okay, perfect. Jim Doyle.
6 Coyote Glen, Jim Doyle.
Thank you. Bob Dwayne. Okay. Let some people in here. I apologize for, you know, this process, but we do have to have a record of everybody who's here. Why don't I just ask at this point, there's a few phone people calling in by phone, but if I haven't asked you to say your name and confirm your identification, can you just try to get it out there? And just, you know, we'll try to do it in some kind of orderly way, but if you could just let me know that I haven't called your name.
Christine Harris.
Okay, Christine.
16 Partridge Lane.
Perfect, thank you, Christine.
Good evening.
I'm Mike, it's Karen DiMaio, 9 Pine Knoll.
Perfect, thank you, Karen.
Kip DeVito with Verizon Wireless.
Thank you, Kip. Anybody else?
Why aren't they showing their faces?
Say that again, ma'am, if you could? Okay, anybody else who I've missed? Okay. All right.
What she asked was why are the Verizon Wireless people not showing their faces?
Well, let's, why don't we just start waiting on the hearing, let me just find out who's doing what first, and we will address those issues as they come up. So hold on one second. Let me just start because it's been the point of contact with Mike Fenton, or I, Ellen, I don't care which one of you, I know you two are sort of the, I think the primary attorneys over there dealing with this, but I could be wrong.
All right, Mike will, Mike will start.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Good evening, Mike, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Good. So if you could, you know, I'm gonna sort of turn the floor over to Verizon for a presentation. You know, if you have a sense and you can let me know, sort of, if you know the order that you intend to sort of go and present it, if there's, I know there's a few people here who are representing Verizon, so if you could just kind of give me a sort of a sense of what you guys are planning on doing, that'd be great.
Sure, so I'm gonna make some brief introductory remarks about the history of the site, and then we're gonna turn it over to Sylvester from Hudson Design Group, who will share his screen and enable everybody to see the zoning drawings, as well as the photo simulation package. And when Sylvester's done with his presentation, we're gonna turn it over to Jay Littori, who is the radio frequency expert for Verizon, who will explain the coverage needs that this site is proposed to fix.
Okay.
Do you want to?
Sylvester and Jay will need permission to share their screens with the Zoom meeting.
Okay, so let me. I will get to that. There are a couple things first, so that's a sense of where we're gonna go. I want to do the housekeeping first from my end, at least, and I don't know if other board members have anything they needed to put out there, but one is, for purposes of this hearing, I'm gonna designate the associate member, Jessica Thornton, as a voting member, if necessary. I suspect this is going to be, you know, more than one meeting date, and so to ensure that there are new issues going forward and that they maintain enough people to, to vote on this, I'm going to designate her as a voting member of the board point for this public hearing. Second, I live at 16 Lexington Circle. It is on the, I guess you would say, the far side of where this is, the far side of Lexington Circle away from this site. I am not in a butter, I am not in a butter, too in a butter, and I don't believe I'm an interested party in any way. I have consulted with various folks and counsel for the town to sort of get a sense of, you know, where things stand and what they think I should do. What I think we've come to, and at least makes sense in my mind, is I'm not aware of any financial impact or interest that I could possibly have in this. You know, at this point in time, I don't know, I don't know anything. I haven't seen any evidence about, you know, any kind of impact on my property based on this cell tower here. So at this point in time, I don't see myself being conflicted out from participating in this. I'm certainly planning on, you know, keeping an eye on that, and if at some point something comes up where, you know, there may be a financial impact to my property and would raise a conflict of interest, I'll certainly address it and recuse myself from it, but I don't see it right now. I, I'm happy to hear any comments or anything that people want to add on that now to help me, you know, work through it, but I can tell you that I have spent a decent amount of time thinking through it and looking at it and reviewing what the ethical and I just don't see the conflict that needs to cause me to recuse myself at this point in time, I do need to disclose it, but I'm sure that everybody knows about it, but I don't think it, I need to recuse myself. Does anybody have anything to add to that, or questions or anything before we get started?
Michael, were the abutters notified by certified mail?
My understanding, and Ellen or Megan can certainly chime in here, but my understanding is that everybody received the required notice, this was advertised, this was posted. Everything that needed to be done for this public hearing was done, is my understanding.
Excuse me, but I did not receive mine certified. It was just an ordinary mail. And I'm in a butter, so.
Correct, it's here as well.
Same here, and it is my backyard, literally.
Okay. All right, well. Let's.
Michael, it's, it's not required to be a certified mail. We did not receive any mailings back.
Hold on, let me just.
You may want to look at chapter 185, 23.1, item E, numeral 1J. It says, "The abutters shall be notified by certified mail previous to the public hearing." That's in the cell tower bylaw.
Might, yeah, might, but I, we've talked to the town treasurer and select, and they've, they've, uh, don't allow, they don't want certified mail anymore. We were told that about three years ago.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that's, I think there's a distinction between the special permit process and this process. Marcus, refresh me to the, which area, never mind.
Yeah, it's 185, 23.1, which is the bylaw, and it's section E, item 1J.
Okay. So. It is a requirement, and my inclination, if you give me one minute to pull it up, is to just run through and make sure.
We were notified by the state, Michael, that we didn't have to do that?
Yeah, but I think, you know, I, I could be wrong, Ellen, and I don't, so I don't, I, I think that may be for a standard, you know, special permit, public hearing, rather than this particular one, which under 23.1 says certified mail, but let me just, let's see if we can at least somewhat resolve this, well, I guess we probably can't. Well, I'm gonna, I am going to, I think, at this point, defer to Mike Fenton, Attorney Fenton, and see what his, his, his thoughts on this are, since he is representing the applicant.
We would like to proceed this evening. Think that, as Mr. Slusser pointed out, there's, haven't been any return of service, and so that would lead to the conclusion that the abutters have received actual notice.
Okay. So getting that.
How do you know? How can you verify that everyone received a letter if it wasn't certified?
Okay, hold on a second, and this is why I sort of had, someone asked a question, I believe, in the chat about muting everyone. So let me just run through a bit of the ground rules, and I wanted to get through a few of these things before we got to that, but let me, since we're on this. What I would like, you know, technically, under the, under the rules, how this needs to run is that the board needs to allow people to, you know, address the board. You don't have to worry, we will let everybody who wants to say something, say something. But we typically do this in a certain order to make it a little bit more orderly. What we typically do, and we will get into it, is we allow the applicant to make their presentation, what they want to, you know, present to the board and to the public who is listening. We then allow, and it becomes a little more interactive, but allow the planning board members to ask some questions and, and understand what they need to know from the applicant. We then turn it over to public officials in town who may have questions or comments, because there may be, you know, issues that arise from other boards or departments in town. They may want to have, put some input in there, and then we open it up to public comments, and I promise you, we will get to you, if we get to a point tonight where we need to continue it on to a different night, we will get to you on a different night, I, I promise you, so if you could just try to let us get through this, and you will have an opportunity to speak later on. If there's certainly, what I would say, and I, I don't have an issue with this, if there is a procedural issue or you see something that I'm doing wrong, or that you think we're doing wrong, and you want to raise it, you know, please do at the time, then we don't have to sort of reinvent it later on. So here's what I would say about the certified mail issue, you know. I, I'm looking at the abutters list right now, I believe. I, I'm looking at the, looking at the list on the map, there may be more, but I see a number of the direct abutters who are here on the Zoom call this evening. Because I expect, fully expect, this to last more than one meeting, my inclination is to proceed tonight. It'll be taped, so that if there was someone who didn't get notice, they are able to listen to the tape, and at another meeting, they can come and ask questions and present their views. That would be my inclination, I think that that would eliminate any possible prejudice, and in the meantime, what we will do is send certified mail to the abutters, you know, so that we can make sure that that has been complied with prior to the next day of the hearing.
We haven't, we haven't received any return mail at all, Michael?
No, and I, and I suspect that there is not going to be an issue, but you know, as I'm looking quickly at the list of abutters, I'm seeing names that I don't recall reading out this evening, and so I just want to make sure that there is no issue, that there is no prejudice. I mean, that's, I, you know, we, we obviously can't turn the clock back and send out certified mail now that the hearing has started, but I think the way to eliminate any prejudice to anybody who is in a butter is to send out the certified mail, you know, this week to them, let them know about the next date of the hearing, and allow for any comments or questions, and make the, make the recording of this accessible to them so that they can, they can listen to it and see what is said. If anybody has anything to add or, or questions about that, I'm happy to, I'm happy to listen to it. Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. I, I believe that the procedure should be followed to the letter of the town bylaws, and then if we go forward with this hearing as it is, it, it invalidates the process. There is a procedure in place, there are bylaws written, we should follow them.
Do you see any, if I, if I could ask you a question, just to follow up on that, just so I can better understand, I appreciate where it is. Typically, we look for any prejudice that may be incurred if things are, you know, errors are made. You know, because not every single public hearing is done perfectly, it, it happens. So do you see any prejudice to anyone if it's done in the way that I mentioned? I, I, you know, it's ultimately.
I can address that really quickly. This is, a lot of people in town kind of find out about this by word of mouth, not by public notification, for whatever reason. During the pandemic, we're not all paying attention to all the media sources that involve the town process. So a lot of people are on this meeting because it's the first time they've heard about it. And, and I'm sure there's, you can tell by the participation, there's a lot of very concerned neighbors in and around dear Run, Lexington Circle, Pine Knoll. We want to take a really good, hard look at it before we have to go into a town meeting to voice our opinions.
Well. All right.
In order for it to be successfully proposed to the town, the procedure should be adhered to, and if the procedure has not been adhered to, which is just the point that was just brought up, that the certified mail wasn't sent out to all the abutters, then the process should start from the beginning. If anybody in any other town was applying for a special permit, they have to follow the procedures that are written in the town bylaws. I don't think it's appropriate for us to skirt any of the procedures, regardless of what the outcome is. The process is put in place for a reason, so it needs to be adhered to from the start.
To piggyback, it sounds like there are presumptions being made that everybody was notified. We don't have return mail, but we don't have proof that they have been sufficiently notified. Therefore, how can we know that everybody's present that should be?
Again, I appreciate that, and I'm not suggesting that everybody necessarily is. You know, I, I don't know whether people who aren't here got notice or not, I just, you know, I obviously don't have a clue. Uh, I know it was sent out and we didn't get returned mail. You know, as I said, I, I, because of the length of this and because it is being recorded via Zoom, I, I'm having difficulty seeing why we should not at least engage in this today, try to correct any error, and I don't see that there would be any prejudice. Frankly, all that would happen if we, if we, you know, uh, stop the hearing because of this procedural error would be that we then had to send out, uh, do this all again with certified mail, uh, and it would, it would be, you know, rather expensive for the town to do the whole process again, to then end up pretty much in the same place.
So, I, I, I can understand that you don't want to do that because it would be inconvenient. But. As, as a, as a town citizen, and all the concerned town citizens that are on this, we want the procedure to happen in the correct process. So, chapter 185 23.1, section E, roman numeral IJ, states that certified mail is supposed to be sent to all the abutters. If it hasn't been sent to all the abutters, how can you want to go forward with a town hearing? Everything from that point is, becomes haphazard. You're saying, oh, it's going to be videotaped, you can watch it if you want to, and if you don't like it, then you can voice your opinion. There is a process in place, we have to adhere to it. That's all I'm saying. And it, uh, that's the expense for, for certified mail for the abutters, it's in the town bylaws, you have to adhere to.
It has nothing, it, what, so, just so you understand the process, it's not so much the expense of the certified mail, it is everything else that has to go along with it, you then have to, uh, publish it, and, uh, so it, there's, there's more to it than that, but. Celeste, let me, um, you had, you, you, I see a, so I'll defer, I'll hear what you have to say.
I actually think Marcus brought up a really good point, Mr. Phelps, that it's the law and we need to follow it. Um, there are people, we have had problems with our mail in town, I can tell you, my daughter received her absentee ballot the day after the election. There has been problems with mail, especially at this time, we've had significant problems with our mail. I think if it's the law, we need to follow it, and I think we need to allow those people, and I think it should be sent out by certified mail. If I had learned anything being involved in the town in the last couple of months, it's that we need to follow procedure, regardless of costs at times. And I think it's unfair, as an abutter, to not have, if I was not, didn't get the mail that day, if it just happened to kind of. Be thrown on the street somewhere, which I have seen mail thrown on the street, I wouldn't have gotten it, and I would have been pretty upset that I missed this meeting, didn't have a fair input. That's it.
Michael, I, I questioned legality of this meeting, based on the comments that everyone shared.
So, here's what we will do then.
Can I make a suggestion?
I'm sorry, I didn't see, was, was that?
Donnie McGrath here.
Thank you, Donnie.
Yeah, hey. Yeah, listen, Michael, it sounds like you're gonna have to, you know, follow the law and send out the certified mail, and, and so all the abutters do get it, and you're gonna have to have another hearing, and the Verizon folks are gonna have to make their presentation. Can I ask that we have some utility from this meeting, though, and at least for people like me who don't have ready availability every night that let Verizon folks do it, so at least I can hear it? They're gonna have to do it again, anyway.
Okay. Donnie, if you could just repeat that, I apologize, because I, I missed, um, a bit of what you said.
I, I was just asking, given we have a lot of people on the line, um, if there's any utility in at least letting the Verizon people say their piece, I'd like to learn something, because there's no guarantee that I'll be available to dial in when you have to redo this whole thing, and I understand legally you have to do that, and Craig and all the others are correct, I support that, but, you know, I just don't want to waste the time I freed up to dial into this thing, I'd like to get some information.
Right, I mean, that's, you know, that's part of the balance, is, you know, we have, you know, 76 people on this call this evening who took time out of their schedule to do it. You know, I. I guess what I would say, um, and I'm certainly willing to listen and, and, you know, would want the input of Verizon as well. Is. I would suggest maybe that we continue this. And. If I, I'm just looking, I want to look at the bylaw one more time.
Mike, it's Karen DeMayo. Are you voting on anything tonight, or is this just more informational?
This would, uh, my, I, I'm only one board member, but my, um, suspicion from having done this for a while is that this is not going to be in any way completed tonight, uh, just from looking at the application and, and knowing what needs to get done. So, that's my expectation. You know, again, that's why I thought that. Trying to find a way that would eliminate the prejudice would, would allow for. At least this to go forward, information provided that can be reviewed by others who, you know, perhaps didn't get notice of it, um, and then they could participate in the next one. But, you know, I guess the other option would be. Since we haven't really had any presentation, any substance provided for tonight, while I do appreciate that the public hearing has technically been open, um, you know, I don't see a need to. Make it moot and go through an entire, uh, advertising process again. What I would suggest, since this has been advertised, um, is that we continue this to the next meeting, and in the meantime, send out certified mail to the abutters, which put in notice that this continued hearing will take up again. I gotta look at our calendar, but I expect that we could probably put it on, uh, for two weeks from now, which is. The. Sixth of October. Let me first ask Mike Fenton about that, and I, I know you see no reason not to go forward with it tonight, but, um, just let me, give me your thoughts on, on allowing for that compliance, since I, you know, it is an error that you, you potentially may have to deal with, you know, going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will comply with whatever the chair and the board decides here. We're happy to agree to a continuance if you'd like some time to address the notice issues, um, and we're also happy to provide, uh, sneak preview of the presentation tonight, if you think that that would be a good use of everybody's time.
Okay.
So, uh, we do not object, uh, to a continuance to allow for additional time, uh, to fix notice.
All right.
And Michael, this is Jim Doyle. I spend a lot of time in this arena, I, um, have been in the commercial real estate business for 30 years, um, and I would just caution everybody on the phone, I mean, with lawyers on the phone, to everyone's point here, it's not just to be a pain in the butt to, to, you know, make you redo this, this is a procedural thing. And I'll tell you, again, being in this business for 30 years, I rarely see something like this, I mean, this is a very small detail that really should not be missed, no offense to anybody on the line, but, um, as we speak of this, you know, we should really, as you guys go back and consider what's being said here, consider, you know, all that we need to do to kind of follow the rules, and I think you want to do that to protect yourselves on your end, right? To not get to the end of this and have a small procedure be something that holds you up from doing what you want to do. So, either way, I think you should really consider all the steps along this way, and make sure that the procedures are followed. Just a comment.
Yep.
I'd like to make a comment. My name is Matt Sikovic, I live at 40 Lexington Circle.
Yes.
My, my, my question's more directed, not at Southwick. My, my questions are really directed towards Verizon, because the material that was left on the outside of my mailbox is no better than what a ninth grader would have done for a school assignment.
Well, that wasn't left outside your mailbox, on your mailbox.
Yes, it was, Mike, it was left outside my mailbox.
Let me, let me finish if I could, please.
But I really want to target, I really want to target Verizon, so.
Oh, no, no, stop, hold on, hold on, please, we're, we're talking about the issue about continuing this, and again, I, I don't necessarily want to get into substance of this, if we don't, if that's, if we're gonna choose to move this and allow for certified mail to everybody, I frankly think it is appropriate not to get into the substance of it, because if your complaint is about, uh, you know, that people are not going to be able to participate tonight, um, then we should end it and move on to the next one, and allow everybody to participate. Getting a sneak preview, as, as Attorney Fenton said it, or, you know, anything like that, I think goes against that objection, which is, you know, that, that people are not going to be able to, to participate and, and see this tonight unless they go to a recording. So, if that's the objection, the solution to that is to not get into the substance, continue this on.
Well, can I just add to that, Mike? I'm sorry, similar to Jim Doyle, I, I happen to be a professional that has been in really closely to this realm that you guys are presenting for the cell tower, um, my, my profession is very much in line, and the material that I'm looking at right now, there's no way, as a resident of this area, I can begin to make any assessment on what Verizon's really trying to do here, and I'm actually surprised that this material, at this level, for this type of infrastructure that's being proposed at this location, is of this quality. So, the town deserves better, Mike, in my opinion, and I guess I'm taking back that Verizon has provided us more in paper or in a PowerPoint, something we can chew on. So, when they're presenting, as Donnie McGrath mentioned, we have an opportunity to understand what, what they're actually proposing, because this, this presentation doesn't do anything for me, and I happen to be in.
If I could just take, take control here.
That's fine, I just wanted to make that point, if, if that's public record, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Let me just clear up and make sure that everybody understands. We advertise, um, this public hearing, um, it gets posted, uh, in various places in town, it gets advertised in the newspaper, and as I read at the beginning of, um, the hearing, um, what the notice says is that, um, if you need, um, if you wish to have further information and get a copy of the application plans, um, you know, typically it uses, it used to say, you know, come to town hall or contact town hall, you can come to town hall, town hall and look at them, obviously that can't be done right now, um, but we have put in the email of the town planner, and if you needed more information, you can contact the town planner and he can email you copies of, uh, the application and the plans. I could be wrong, Matt, and I, I, you know, I'm more than happy if I am, um, but my understanding of what you may be looking at, and I could be, you know, again, I could be wrong, but if it's something that has town, town meeting to review the Verizon cell phone tower and our neighborhood in, in highlight, um, that is a letter that was provided by, um, I presume a resident of the neighborhood, uh, and put on everybody's mailbox, uh, it was not something that was provided by Verizon. Verizon has, I want to say, about 168 pages of, um, application materials that have been provided to the town and are available for inspection, so, you know, I do, I, I, I just want to clarify that, because I think there is, when I read that letter, um, you know, there are some things that are incorrect, I mean, people, you know, it, it was on the town calendar, uh, it's not a town meeting, this is a public hearing from the planning board, it's not going to proceed to any kind of town meeting. But I, I get, you know, people, you know, who aren't doing this, I'm the chair of the board, so I do this, and I know what the procedures are, I, I, you know, you read this and you understand what's going on generally, um, but I don't want there to be any sort of, um, misunderstanding and, and sort of, uh, being upset at one party or the other because of it. What this was is not something from Verizon, it's not their application, there is a lot more to it. It is available for inspection, albeit more difficult in this timeframe, um, you know, arguably to do it, um, but, uh, it is available for inspection, and typically, in these public hearings, you know, uh, of any size, um, you know, compare this similar to like a development in town, which lasts usually a few meetings, um, there usually is a pretty detailed presentation, uh, by the applicant, I expect, uh, given how Attorney Fenton had described the process that they intend to go through tonight, that that was going to be a pretty, uh, detailed, in-depth presentation about what the application is. So, you know, I am, you know, again, I am, my, my, if, if the issue is that we want to make sure that everybody has the right to participate, I, my opinion is that before we get into the substance, uh, we should continue this to, uh, two weeks from today. You know, it, it, again, I will say this, and, and Attorney Fenton can offer his opinion as well, because, again, it may turn out to be his issue, but I, this technically would not comply with the bylaw, I suppose, because it has to be done prior to a public hearing, and we've already technically opened it, um, but we haven't gotten into the substance in any way, shape, or form, so I don't see how anybody would possibly be prejudiced if we just continued this to the next hearing, sent out certified letters to everybody, and then proceeded at the next hearing, yeah, the next meeting.
Mr. Michael?
Based on the, um, yes, Alan?
I was gonna, I was just gonna, you know, Michael said it was going to be sent out to everybody. Michael, the only abutters, uh, supplied to us by the assessing department are the ones who would get letters.
I, I should, yeah, I, I apologize, I, I miss, I spoke too broadly in what I was saying, it'd be sent out to the, uh, certified mail would be sent out to the abutters, as is required by section 23.1. We would do that, you know, sort of, immediately after this, or, you know, tomorrow or the next day, send it out by certified mail, make sure everybody is aware that they, uh, that this wasn't substantively begun at this hearing, and would begin in substance at the October, I forget what I said, sixth, um, hearing. So, uh, you know, with that on the table, I'm happy to listen to comments, um, but that's, if, if we want to address the complaints that are being made, I, I think that's the way we have to go.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, um, I would just add that, uh, Verizon is, is ready here with our team to present a very thorough, uh, presentation, we're anxious to do that, but based on, um, the discomfort expressed, uh, by yourself and other members in the town regarding, uh, the way that notice was sent out, we would not object, uh, to a continuance until, uh, October 6th, as you stated, so we would be very happy to do that, um, and, uh, we would not object. You mentioned earlier that you expect that this meeting wouldn't, uh, be concluded after just one hearing, and, and our prior experience, one of the reasons that many of these meetings get continued is a concern over potential visibility of the tower, and where it could be visible from. Part of our application packet has a very thorough visual simulation, uh, uh, presentation that shows, uh, the various limited views in town, uh, but in the meantime, in the interest of time, if the board would like to, uh, propose a date that we would conduct a second balloon float, uh, between now and that date in October, uh, Verizon would be happy to do that, uh, and perhaps there could be, uh, at least that utility that we could take from this time spent tonight.
So, um. Well, I guess let me say this, I don't have a problem if you do it, um, and I am certainly just one voice, but my inclination, um, as I've been thinking about this, is I, I don't see the, um. Having the hearing begin at this timeframe should not rule out the ability of the board and the public to view a balloon test or some other type of visibility test, uh, at a time when it'll be most visible, which it is for a number of, you know, a good portion of the months of the year, um, starting in November, December, um, those trees are gonna be empty, and you're gonna be able to see more. So, I'm not sure trying to do a balloon test in September is going to show you what the folks around here may want to see. is going to show you what the folks around here may want to see when the balloon test is conducted. I think that needs to be done later on. Again, that's just my opinion. You know, doing one now may have some utility. It may give people a sense of things. And I do appreciate that you did have the photographs and, and whatever else in your packet. My initial opinion when I looked at those was that, one, you didn't give notice to anybody about it being done. So no one had the opportunity to view it. And you sort of, you know, again, you may be 100% accurate in the locations you chose to take pictures from and what could be seen, but you're the one who chose it. And I think people have, should have the opportunity from their, their, you know, or where they're, you know, walking or where they're doing things to be able to view it however they wish. So those were my thoughts. Again, just one member, but those were my thoughts on it.
I'd like to second that, Michael. It seems like public comment and concern is about not only the timing of the test, but also the specific type of test. The balloon versus crane is a term that has been thrown out there. That is a bit more permanent in a larger structure, more similar to the structure that will be eventually going up. So that's something also that the public has expressed concern about.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fenton, go ahead. Attorney Fenton.
So, in the interest of not getting, we, we have a consultant on the phone who prepared this test, who can answer the substantive questions about all those types of things. In the interest of meeting your goal of not getting into the substance here tonight, I would ask that we have that continuance.
Yeah.
I would like just to respond to two points that you made, though. The photo simulations that are submitted were prepared during leaf-off conditions. So when we go through them, you'll see the potential visibility of the tower based on the leaf-off conditions. And there is no requirement in the bylaw for a balloon test. And so that's why I was trying to get a sense from the board if you wanted us to do another one in the interim. But given that it doesn't appear that there's consensus on that subject, at least readily available consensus, I, I would ask that we continue until October 6th and we can make our full presentation with our, with our team at that time.
Okay. And I, I, I think that's how I feel about that same. I don't think that issue is going to be decided in any reasonable way to accomplish the goal that I want to accomplish this evening.
Can I make a comment? Because I've been around, I've been around these types of tests over the years. And a crane would be very detrimental to the surrounding areas because trees would have to be cut for a crane of this size to reach the 120 foot. And the whole object is to try to be environmentally correct. And it's kind of unfortunate to go and decimate a forest to put up a crane where the balloon is a, a standard testing. And that's just, that's just a thought.
We can get into that more at the next meeting as to what it is. All right. So I guess let me just open it up to the public as far as any comments on that intention, you know, to, to continue it to the next hearing, send out certified mail to the butters of the property and get it to the substance starting then.
Michael, does that have to be re-advertised in the paper?
I don't believe it has to be re-advertised since we are just continuing the public hearing. You know, what we need to do is, is comply with the certification, which I think gets accomplished by sending certified mail to the, to the butters. Again, I don't think it is going to be perfect, but since you cannot go back in time, I think this is, satisfies the concerns that people have. But again, I'm happy to listen to comments, but I think that satisfies the concerns that people have, that people may not have gotten notice, may not have gotten the certified mail. And so we will address that and proceed on the 6th.
Megan, are you there still?
Yes.
Do we have anything else scheduled on October 6th on the agenda?
The driveway for McDonald's.
Do you want us to bump them out, Michael?
Because of this, I'm, Alan, what is the, I apologize because I'm not sure I remember. What is the driveway issue with McDonald's?
McDonald's Restaurant wants to come in for a modification to an existing site plan. Right now they have one turning movement, movement coming in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They want to do two because traffic, traffic is backed out onto College Highway, creating a hazard.
I would suggest that we put this in at 7:15. I don't know what time we got. I assume McDonald's is on at 7:15. And I, I, I sort of let McDonald's decide what they wish to do. If there's some degree of urgency and they wish to put it on at the end of that meeting, it's going to be a long one, but they, we could deal with it if there was that degree of urgency. But I would suggest that they agree to move it to the following meeting.
Okay. I will let them know.
Okay. Anybody else have comments on, you know, what the, what the proposed process is going forward to try to address this issue?
Mike, this is Doug Mogul, Chair of the Select Board, and I 100% agree with your, your procedure here. It's at everyone's peril if you were to continue the hearing tonight. Better to confer with Town Council tomorrow. If necessary, cure the defect via the certified mail and reconvene in two weeks. I wouldn't give any additional information tonight on this proposal. Just continue it to the next meeting because you don't want to create people saying, well, they said this, this meeting, and it wasn't noticed right, and now we said this, this meeting. Just carry to your next meeting and, and proceed. I admire you for, for doing that. I think it's the best approach to cure the, the clerical defect. And, you know, the person was right on the phone. There is a procedure to be followed. The bylaw, I know we had changed the, there were rules changed several years ago about special permits, but this is an artifact still in wireless communication. Overlay District, which we frankly don't have very often, so, you know, it's a, you know, an oversight that can be cured in time for your next meeting. And in the interest of both the applicant, the town, the best thing to do is to cure the defect after consulting with council and make sure that that defect can be cured via just sending out the certified mail and continuing to the 6th.
Yeah. Thank you, Doug. And that's a fair point. And let me add that caveat to what I said, which is I have every expectation that we will just simply continue, we will sort of continue this hearing. It'll be a continued hearing on the 6th. That'll of course be dependent on Town Council and what their opinion is, and I will contact them tomorrow. If anything does change, what I would suggest to everybody on this call is, obviously, if you are in a butter, you will receive a certified letter and it'll tell you when the, when this is going to be. And if not, I would suggest that you look on the town website at the calendar and see, you know, when it's scheduled for. If it has to be, you know, entirely reopened, there will also be, you know, advertising in the newspaper as well. But, you know, I would suggest you take a look at what the town calendar says. You can also contact, you know, individuals in town. Frankly, as I said, I live right down the street, so y'all are welcome to swing by and, you know, ask me something about it as well. I, I don't mind. So, you know, I want to try to make sure that everybody who has the op, who, who wants to say something and offer input has the ability to do so. And we're trying to do that in the best possible manner. So is there anything else that anybody wishes to offer tonight before we move on to, before we continue this and move on to the next matter on the agenda?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
My name's Peter Kelly. I live on Woodside Circle. The general concern, one question, and if this goes too far into subject, I apologize. But the presentation that, that we will be seeing on the 6th now, will health concerns and property values be addressed?
I, I, I wouldn't get too much into, I don't want to get too much into the substance tonight. You know, what I, let me say this, though, actually, without getting too much into substance, because I think it will give people perhaps a better sense of what the process is. So if you, if you would mind indulging me for a couple minutes here, I'll make this as brief as possible because everybody may not be familiar with what the bylaws or the laws are and what constrains our review of this. So there is a provision in the Southwick bylaws. It's Chapter 185, Section 23.1. It's called the Wireless Communications Services District. You can go online and Google it and you will, Southwick bylaws, and you can pull it up. Like I said, 185, which is the zoning chapter, Section 23.1. You know, it can certainly be a little bit dense as you go through it. I, I certainly acknowledge that, but generally it provides sort of the requirements of what, what, you know, in this case, cell towers, what the height, what the setup needs to be, what the, what they may need to do on an annual basis if they're allowed to build one, what the sort of scope of what the planning board needs to look at. We need to look at whether existing towers or other locations can accommodate what's being put on there. We need to look at whether it is necessary to put it on that site versus other ones. We have to look at whether there is, whether and to what extent there is a negative impact from the proximity of the facility to residential dwellings and the impact of the facility on the residences. Consider whether and to what extent there is a negative impact of the proposed facility on scenic vistas and other natural features in the landscape. I will say that under, that is, you know, and there's more in the bylaw and I, I sort of invite everybody to take a look through it and see what sense you get from it. We can talk more about it at the next hearing. I would point out, because it's not necessarily evident when you look at that, that there also is the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which is a federal statute. And under, if anybody wants to really look at that, and speaking of dense text, you can look at that. But that is 47 USC 332, Section 332. And there is a, a provision in that federal law which limits to some degree what local authorities can consider when they are looking at cell tower placement. And I will read it to you what it says. "We know local government may regulate, in this case, cell phone towers on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the F's, I believe it's the FCC's regulations concerning such emissions." So I, you know, just understand that that, there is that language out there which constrains what we are allowed to consider in our deliberation. The other thing that it requires is that we have to put our decision in writing. So at the end of this, you will see something in writing. And we need to support our decision by substantial evidence. So that is sort of the process of what the planning board is going to be looking at as we, as we go along here. And we're going to be looking at the need of this just generally and for this particular site and the impacts of it on what's around that site is, is how I would sort of classify it. So, you know, I would take a look at that in, in the meantime. But that is how I understand it and that is how, you know, I intend to proceed at the next meeting.
May I ask a question in regards to the next meeting, please? Amber Book, 10-5-0. So the next meeting, I'm, I'm of the understanding that this is going to be more of a presentational meeting on Verizon's end to just kind of give us an idea of what, you know, where they want to put it, what it's going to look like. And there's going to be no voting as of at the end of that meeting. This will kind of go on if there's questions and things that need to be addressed further, further down the road in regards to the residents?
Well, so.
Or the town?
So as I said, I think I mentioned earlier, but, you know, you do a presentate, they do their presentation. I can't tell you how long that's going to take, you know, so we gotta play it a little bit by ear. But they do their presentation. We then turn to the planning board to, you know, they have comments and questions for the applicant. You then turn to public officials, then you turn to the public and, and let everybody get their questions, comments, input. You know, it's a little bit of, you, you have to play it by ear a little bit because you don't know how long the presentation is. And frankly, you know, some of these, you get into a, a point in the evening where you kind of say it's probably better for everybody to just continue this on to the next hearing. Everybody's a little fresher and, and, you know, things are going a little bit more smoothly. So, you know, we try to give as much as we can that evening, but especially if we intend to continue something. And like I said, as we, you heard some discussion about the balloon test. You know, my, based on that, my expectation is there will be some degree of continuation of this going forward. But, you know, so we do try to get as much as we can in to a public hearing, continuing when necessary. All right. Any other questions before we continue this on to the next hearing? The next meeting date? Okay. So the expectation, as I said, is that this will be on for 7:15 on October, Tuesday, October 6th. The, let me, did we, Megan, did we set the meeting yet?
Yes, I believe it's October. No, we didn't.
I'm sorry. Did we, I mean, did we put the, the Zoom information is really what I'm looking for. I apologize.
Yeah, it's there.
All right, hold on.
Won't you have to redo the Zoom information if you're to continue it for two weeks?
You know what, Michael? You didn't give me a Zoom yet for that.
Yep. That's what I was just looking at. All right. So give me one minute, folks. If everybody wants to grab a pencil, we can at least give you the information for the next meeting right now. Okay. And again, this will all be, you know, sent out and posted to the, the people. It needs to be sent to the butters as well as posted on the town website in various locations in town. But for the folks here tonight on October 6th, the seven, it starts at 7 o'clock PM. This will be on for 7:15 PM. Let me just, I believe. Yeah. So that the, if you're dialing in, if you're telephone, you're using your telephone to call in, you can use the same phone number that you did tonight. And then it just asks you to enter the meeting ID, I believe. I haven't done it, frankly. But I believe it asked you to enter the meeting ID and you would use that new meeting ID that I just gave you. Does anybody need me to repeat that meeting ID and passcode?
Mr. Chair, can you repeat it? The number that I wrote down doesn't match what, what was just shared in the chat. So I want to make sure everybody has the right meeting ID.
I, I, yeah, I have, you know what? That's fair. There is the chat and let me just make sure that that is.
I could have mistransposed it.
And Jessica's missing a 2 at the end. So hold on. Let me, uh, let me put it in the chat. If anybody is comfortable using that, I will put that in there. But I believe Jessica just has the 2 missing from the meeting ID, but. Thank you. I'm just looking quickly, so I want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. There's the meeting ID. Passcode is 284823. Okay. 284823, yes. So that is the correct information for the meeting on October 6th. Any other questions? So, all right, thank you. We'll move on. Let me, let me just ask one other thing. And I'm just, I apologize because I'm, there's so much going on that I'm having a difficulty looking at the chat as well as doing everything that I'm doing. What I would ask next time, if possible, to try to expedite things is if folks can put on their name of the person that is participating in it on their Zoom, that would be great. Then we can kind of expedite this a little bit. You know, we spent about 15 minutes going through everybody because we don't really have a sign in sheet. I will sort of see if there's any other options that we can do. But, you know, if you were going to a public meet, a public hearing in Town Hall, as you typically do, you'd be signing into a sign in sheet with your name and address. So we're trying to keep this as similar to that as possible to comply with the law. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank you for your diligence and patience on this. It's not easy holding Zoom in COVID times and we're sensitive to the notice issues as well. So appreciative for everybody's time tonight. And our concluding request is just that there be a roll call vote, which is required when you're conducting these meetings via Zoom under the current executive orders to continue the meeting until October 6th at 7:00 PM.
Of course, yep, that's what we plan on doing. That's what we pretty much done for every single portion of, every meeting that we've done, unfortunately, having to do that. So, all right, so I would ask for a motion to continue this public hearing to 7:15 PM on October 6th.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Dave Spina, second. All those in, we'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor will say aye. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
That odds might have had to drop off. So Sutton, you're up.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay, so this will go on for October 6th at 7:15 PM. Like I said, I'd invite everybody to try to get information if you want. In the meantime, there is a, you know, rather extensive application sitting at Town Hall and we can try to make that available to you the best way possible. Okay. What is on the agenda?
Michael, we have to go back to, we have to go back to two things that I talked about in the pledge report.
Yes, let's go do that. So we can resolve that since they have to be done by tomorrow. Or at least one of them does.
Michael, on the 275 Grandin Road to an AR lots, removal from chapter 61. That's nothing that the planning board, that land is nothing the planning board has indicated an interest in. We did have two properties up on South Loomis that we put in when there was a request for properties that the planning board was interested in possibly, you know, the town acquiring. So these two weren't, were not involved at all.
And typically, Michael, conservation, conservation is the one who's key on preserving the land. And there, there is no wetlands. And there is an existing gas company transmission easement to run through one of the properties. So it's, it's not something would be part of our future dreams in extending roads or using it as a town park or anything like that.
No, and I, I can't imagine that that we would. I just wanted to give people at least, you know, a minute to process it and figured it would be best to just kind of put that off to the end and let people kind of think it through in case there was anything that popped up in their head. Not that we weren't doing other things during that meantime. All right, so does, no one has any problem with reporting to, who are we doing it to, the select board? That we don't have any interest in that property? Okay. Having heard no comments, I will, Alan, if you could, well, we can send a formal email just so that they have it though. At least one member is still on the call. But we will email to the select board, letting them know that, that we have no, you know.
I can do that.
Thank you. Okay. What was the other issue, please, Alan?
We were talking about on the Greens on the east side. You know, there, there is some open space between the proposed properties. And there's a brook that runs through the old golf course. And so there is, there's open space along there. And there are two accesses off the cul-de-sacs proposed for the, on the Greens East. And the question was, it's not required, and I checked, I checked with Dennis and he checked with the state to allow open space for the whole town. And it would seem to be kind of a little unreasonable to how these, these small cul-de-sacs have people parking along the cul-de-sac and enticing them to walk through what's called open space. So Attorney Beglin brought it to our, to our, to my attention and Dennis's attention. David Scherer, their attorney, had put down, it was a access to the owners of the subdivision and not for all public. So he's questioning, do we want to have it for all public? There is no parking areas for them to park into. I would think that the people on the subdivision would be upset having people parking on the road in front of them or possibly even trespassing. There will be, there is a, there is a small path to the open space, but people don't really adhere to where there should be walking. So it was something that I was asked to bring it up to the meeting tonight, like conservation as well as Mr. Beglin.
So.
And I think we talked about this quite a bit. You know, Mr. Sutton, from what I can recall, brought it up and said it would be a hardship on people walking.
If that sounds like Dave's a big, you know.
Do you remember that, Dave?
Public access guy. No, here's the, here's. I don't, if we want to discuss it and we say no, then it, that's fine. I just, it'd be a mood issue because my memory of that is that you can't require a developer to make that publicly accessible open space. And there was one other condition that had to be met, and I forget what it was. Maybe if it was part of the calculation for, I don't know. But there was something that had to do with you're not allowed to make that publicly accessible or require that to be publicly accessible in certain conditions because it amounts to a taking of property. I just can't remember off the top of my head. It's been a while since we addressed that. So it may be a mood issue anyways. And that may have been.
What did we, what did we do on the Greens West? There's open space there, what did we do there?
There we had, there we have, it's open to the public.
But I, that came up when we were doing those. And I, again, I, you know, I'm not sure we need, do we need to decide this tonight?
No, no.
So.
No, it's, it's part of, you know, they, they're trying, they're trying to get all the legal documentation in place because they are, there are, they do have a bond, a covenant in lieu of bond. The first road is paved. I wouldn't anticipate they're going to be looking for road acceptance. So it's something that we can bring it up at another time.
All right, well, let me.
Well, we should look at who's going to control the open space because there's three ways that it can be managed.
Yeah, it's going to be done by a homeowners association.
Yeah, I think we sort of defaulted to that homeowners association now. It's not, right, it's farmers and homeowners and town, right? I mean, the three.
Correct, it's going to be, it can be, can be turned over to farming activity, homeowners association, and they, everything, everything is a homeowners association, both on the west side and the east side.
Right. So let me just refresh my memory about that issue when I talk to Town Council tomorrow, since I will be talking to them tomorrow. I can have him remind me what the issue is with that open space and public access and whether that is even an issue we need to address or whether it's, it's something that, you know, is mooted by the fact that we can't require it.
Okay, and not, not to beat a dead dog, but we, we, years ago, six, seven years ago, we were required, we sent everything out certified mail. And then it was brought to our attention by the town clerk and the state, that certified mail would not be required anymore. In fact, the other towns, Westfield, in Agawam, we don't really even get a, a letter or anything. We just get a postcard.
Here's the distinction, Alan, and I, I think, and I, you know, I'm just going to have to go back and look because to be fair, I don't, you know, I don't get that deep into the weeds on a lot of these things. But I, I think that the distinction is for a regular public hearing, whether applying for a special permit, you know, for use or for whatever it is. If that's a regular special permit public hearing, I don't think you're required to do certified mail and the town has decided to, to cut down that expense on that and not do it voluntarily. But in this one, and I don't remember when, this was probably, you know, 10 years ago. So when this thing got put in, Doug would know better than I since I think he was involved with it. Dude, or actually more than that, right, 2001? Were you, I don't know if he was involved in it then, 2001. So almost 20 years ago. You know, that got put into that specific section of the bylaws. And so for a special permit under that specific section, that'll supersede the normal procedure and you're required to do the certified mail. So I think it's just these wireless communication facilities. And obviously, if there is another provision in the, in the zoning bylaws where some special thing has to be done by certified mail, you'd obviously have to comply with that. But, you know, I think it's, I think it's specific to this cell tower issue and not generally.
And Mike, you, you guys should just take a note because we did change the procedure to follow convention is go through the bylaw or assign the vice chair to go through the bylaw, find every copy of the word certified and make a bylaw change to go on the next town meeting. These will be minor bylaw amendments. You'll have to have a public hearing and wipe out the word certified for notice or notice in accordance with current special permit procedures so you don't get bit in the ass by this again some other day. I mean, I feel bad, you know. I feel bad because I know that you, you held this hearing off for almost six months because you didn't want to do it on Zoom. You wanted to have it out in public. You wanted to do it the right way. And, you know, you got beat over the head for doing the right thing. And I feel bad and I apologize. I didn't realize that, that that was even in there. I'm sure no, you know, interesting that the vice chair knew about it as the public hearing opened and, you know, that festered for that long. But I think it, you know, this should have been, obviously, it's a defect that can be cured. I believe you can cure it. You should talk to the attorney tomorrow and just get it. Make sure that you're in the clear that you don't have to renotice it again. But I don't think you do. But again, I just wanted to say thank you. I think you handled that with aplomb. There was 80 plus people on that Zoom call, you know, and, you know, you held your cool, you did a great job. You know, we didn't sign up for the Zoom, whatever you call it, Zoom meetings, the webinars, which would have kept this a little bit more under control. So you, you, you handle that with aplomb and I applaud you.
I, you know, I mean, maybe it's just what I do, but, you know, mistakes like that happen and I don't really worry too much about it. You just try to fix them and move on. So it doesn't bother me and I get it, Alan. I mean, that's not, you know, it's not something you would think about. You're kind of thinking you're just doing another public hearing and it's not something that caught anybody's attention. So I wouldn't worry about it. I mean, I, you know, I, as a trial lawyer, trust me, I can't count on two hands and toes how many mistakes I make during the course of a trial. So I don't really worry about these things too much. They get resolved and you move on. So, you know, we'll figure it out and everybody, you know, I'm pretty certain that everybody who wanted, you know, who wanted to participate was participating. But I think you need to make sure that everything is done and you don't want there to be an issue on either side because, you know, this is something that frequently gets into the hands of lawyers and in front of judges, depending on which, or regardless of which way the decision goes. So let's make sure we do it the right way and, you know, go from there. So. And that's the only, literally the only mention of certified as it relates to mail by the planning board in 185. So we can, we can try to resolve that. Though, you know, to be fair, I, if that's the only one, I'm not sure that's, as long as we know about it, I'm not sure that's the worst thing in the world, right? That's a pretty, that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big thing to put up and having certified mail from people maybe, something that may end up in court is probably not the worst thing in the world to have. So.
Michael, I'm sorry, I just noticed it this evening, but it could be a procedural, you know, ending and an appeal that could happen on this particular project, which obviously is pretty sensitive at this point. And, you know.
No, Marcus, and that's, and that's fair. I, again, there's, there's, there's a high degree of sensitivity to any issues on this one because like I said, you know, these end up in court a lot. So, you know, we should make sure we do it the absolute best we can. As you saw, I mean, I don't think I've mentioned the governor's order on a single Zoom meeting, but I, I, I'm not sure. I don't think I need to, but I did. I mean, I want to make sure that everything is going as by the book as you can because, you know, I don't think any of those prejudice anybody and I think that's the requirement for a court to do anything about it. But at the same time, I want to make sure that there are new issues on any side, regardless of how the, what the outcome is. So if anybody sees errors, you know, notify us, me as soon as you can or notify Marcus as soon as you can. But, you know, let's try to do it the best we can. What else do we have to talk about?
You have minutes?
Yeah, we can do the minutes. I'll be honest with you, with everything going on. Haven't looked at that open space thing. I haven't.
I don't have a letter.
If others have, we can deal with it, but I just haven't. I, it's been too much.
Oh, I think we should, we should hear from David Spina. He was on the subcommittee of that open space recreation plan. Dave, do we endorse it?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I mean, the team that was on, we worked, you know, quite a bit on it. I think one of the good things that the, the team really did was reached out to the public, sent out surveys, really got a lot of input from the public on what they'd like to see as far as open space for the town. Boiled that down to some, you know, three or four, you know, high level goals and then laid out an action plan that kind of addresses those goals. So, you know. It's a, it's a pretty extensive, obviously a pretty extensive document. There's a lot of work that went into it and a lot of thought. And I think that we also, of course, Alex met with a lot of the various boards as well, so. and a lot of thought. And I, I think that we also, of course, Alex met with a lot of the various boards as well, so.
So, you know, I perhaps what we can do, and I, I may be thinking of it incorrectly when I said it before, I, you know, so I, I mean, I remember looking at it before. I remember, you know, Dennis talking about it. I remember Dave talking about it. I remember, you know, everything coming up about it. I have no problem with the plan. What I need to spend time with is looking at the letter that needs to go out. You know, and how we word it. You know, I want to make sure that that's done correctly. So what I would say is why don't we just do our, a roll call vote as to whether everybody is okay sending something to, sending something out that indicates that we approve of the plan. And then I'll work on what the language is in the letter and we can talk about that at the next meeting. So do I hear a motion in that regard?
Marcus Phelps, I'll move.
Do I hear a second?
Dave Spina, second.
All those in favor will do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.
Okay, so I'll, in the next two weeks, get that letter together. You know, I can try to send it around beforehand so people can take a peek at it before the meeting and then we can talk about it at the meeting. Minutes, everybody looked at those. You're okay with those changes have been submitted and made and we're all good? Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, make motion to accept the minutes of September 8.
Do I hear a second?
Dave Spina, second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.
Okay, and as we have let's see what we've done motions on. We don't need anything on the continuance. So for the minutes, I think it's the only thing. I just want to make sure everybody has authorized the electronic signature of their names on those minutes. So that Megan can kind of put those on there and we can have those prepared. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
All right. Is there anything else? No, nothing else on the agenda. Anything else that we need to talk about?
Michael, just a quick comment. I think I sent you and Alan a copy of the memorandum that Randy Brown sent out about the water commissioners voting for a moratorium on any new water connections to the public system.
Yes.
You know, that, so you got that, Alan?
Yeah, and, and the applicant for the proposal has talked to Randy. He's, he's engineer and they're aware of the process. And they're waiting, they're going to be wait to see if one, if the moratorium is lifted, for the moratorium to be lifted, the supply of water being used has got to go down. There is a possibility of looking at a common well, but I don't think because of the topography, you're going to find a well up there that's going to be a very good yield. Sewers is not a problem because we have more than adequate space allotted for sewers. So if the water could be a problem, especially for having fire protection. So I
Is that the Depot Street?
The Depot Street, yes, the proposed condo development. I don't know if you were, I think, one of the meetings, Jessica, but I brought it, it was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago that a moratorium was proposed and it does not include any new subdivision work. The Waltz property, because it was approved, the Greens and the East, they were approved. So there is no jeopardy on them not getting water. It's just the first one is going to be impacted is the condominium development.
So and I'm not sure this is something we need to get into so much in the board here, but I could tell you, at least from my viewpoint, and I it's, it's, I guess, you know, you can, you can view me as biased or not because as everybody knows, it's, you know, my aunt and uncle's property that is ultimately getting developed. They're not the developer. They would be selling it to who is being developed. So that is out there. But I hadn't heard anything about this until well after it was decided. It struck me as odd. I went back and listened to the meeting, looked at the agenda. It wasn't an agenda item. It was discussed in the last 15 minutes of the hearing and voted on. It's, that process bothers me and strikes me as, I, I don't think it was done intentionally. I just, it just strikes me as odd that that's the process for it. When, you know, getting an understanding of, of what's coming down the pike and what's going on, you know, from the planner, from the planning board, from the, you know, even, even Robbevek's office, who does, you know, majority of any new developments in town because they're pretty much the only player in town or around here. You know, maybe someone you want to bring into this and at least get their, their, their thoughts on it. So I, I just, from a process standpoint, it bothers me substantively. You know, in, in law, we always talk about things being tailored to, you know, the, what you're trying to deal with. And this does not seem to be tailored to what the problem is. The problem is, is that in a time where, where everybody's home and, and there's a drought that we are getting, you know, substantially more water use than we were in years past. That to me, you know, the, the sort of variable that's different seems to be, you know, COVID, not anything else. And so to put a, a moratorium on development that has absolutely no end date and has no check-in dates and no times when it's going to be further discussed does not seem to be well tailored to the problem at hand. When you're, especially when you're talking about developments that will, you know, come to fruition two, three, whatever years down the line. It just doesn't seem quite tailored to solve the problem that's going on now.
I made, I made the recommendation to Randy because, like I said, I, I was blindsided by it. And I, I did let the parties know about it. And I said, well, you know, we really should prepare something to send it out to the homeowners or, and I think that's, that's what he did do.
I, I don't, you know, I mean, I, the other part of it that I, you know, and I get that, that, you know, you had approved Walls and you had approved the Greens, but I mean, I, I, I don't know anything about water use, but it strikes me that a dentist's office and whatever it's else is potentially going in there may very well use a hell of a lot more water than, you know, something that may come to the planning board, you know, three months later. But, you know, you, you're sort of arbitrarily putting that date and using that as a cutoff versus what the actual uses. So I, you know, there's just a lot about it that I, I think there should have been more and there should be more discussion about it going forward. And I hope, you know, I plan on attending whatever the next water commissioner's meeting is. I don't know when that is supposed to be, but whenever it is. And just sort of bring up these issues because I do, you know, again, I'm, people are welcome to call me biased and that's fine. I don't think I am being, it's not really where I'm looking.
No, it just, it doesn't seem like it's fair.
From, from, you know, maybe me as a lawyer, but it just seems, it seems, there seems to be issues there that should be further discussed. So again, it may be the right resolution, but I just think there needs to be more discussion and more data and more input about what is trying to be resolved and how you're going to resolve it. So
I think, I think it's concerning that the planning is very compartmentalized. And people, different boards and commissions are kind of doing their own thing. And hopefully Alan is, you know, plugged into some of these things like the other area in the infrastructure is the road work. You know, what roads are going to get upgraded and so forth as it relates to where we may be having some development going on.
Lexington Circle is going to get paved.
Yeah.
It is, it is on the list.
There needs to be sharing back and forth in my mind. And, and I mean, Randy Brown is always a key player. So I think it's good if Alan keeps communication lines open and we don't get, you know, these things compartmentalized where we don't know where, where infrastructure is happening.
And maybe it's part, you know, of making sure that people are aware of, you know, like for us, I think in, in, in the realm that we're in, in the planning board, we, you know, deal with some significant issues that on a regular basis, developments and things like that, cell phone tower, obviously, you know, marijuana bylaws and whatever else. You know, bylaws that affect the entire town that draw a lot of people in sometimes for the hearings and have global impact. You know, and I think we have a process we have to follow and we sort of can really visualize the importance of these by the process we have to follow and the people that turn out. I'm not, you know, the water commissioners may not have that sort of same idea. I mean, it seems odd to me, sitting as a planning board chair, that, you know, a moratorium on, on new development, water connections can be made in that manner. That seems odd to me. That there's, that's a pretty big decision to be made in that manner, but it may just be, you know, the, the usual setting that you're, you know, what you're used to. I mean, we have a little bit more formality and, and process to it than they may have. You know, I mean, the other thing that I guess was news to me, which I didn't sort of catch or at least appreciate is that, you know, I mean, they're down one. I forget the gentleman's name who passed away. I apologize, I just didn't know him. But so they're down, it's just two individuals. So I mean, it's, it's basically two water commissioners and Randy who are, who are making the decisions. So I mean, that, you know, again, it, they're in a position where they only have two people and have limited resources to do that. So you know, it may be the setting of it and it may be the way I'm viewing it from our setting, but I, I just think there needs to be a little bit more to that than than what has transpired.
Well, I, and I, I could venture to guess that they've already spent $30,000 or more in engineering and testing. And ultimately, there, from what I last heard, they were going to go back and talk to the owner. So I don't know if they're going to go back to the owner and try to renegotiate, or they might have had a, a certain time where this deal had to go through.
And that's, like I said, I, you know, again, you know, it always sticks in my head because it is their property. But, you know, to me, the only difference between that development, which from Alan's reports has been shooting for the fall to come in. And Dr. Walls, who just got approved, you know, a couple of months ago and hasn't really done much. I mean, there's, from a, from an expenditure standpoint, there's probably not a hell of a lot different between those two. Obviously, the Greens, you can say there's, there's significantly more because they've progressed on to some, you know, much more. But I, I just, that sort of line in the sand because of timing seemed odd to me. Because they, they did talk about at the meeting, you know, trying not to prejudice the people who already had, you know, had their permits approved. But I, I just, I'm not sure that that that's really what it is. You know, that timing is really the important factor there. But again, you know, those are just my thoughts and I'm not sure that's a planning board issue, other than the fact that I think the planning board should be in the loop for those kinds of things and should be involved and, you know, offered, asked about their opinion on those things.
Right.
So, all right, that's all I have to say about that.
I see David Spina's clock says it's a little after nine.
Yeah, we have accomplished a hell of a lot tonight. We should wrap this up. It's been a very productive meeting.
David Sutton up?
It is David Sutton's turn to wrap this up.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to close this exciting, interesting, learning curve meeting.
Productive, no. Exciting, yes. Do I hear a second?
Dave Spina, second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.
All right.